All right, good evening all. This is Councilor Kier. Could you lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Russell, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilor Sard?
Here.
Councilor Hearn?
Here.
Councilor Stone?
Here.
Mr. Mayor Dameron?
Here.
Councilor Zulo?
Here.
Councilor Kier?
Here.
Councilor Klosky?
Here.
Councilor Pope?
Here.
Ray Lovett?
Here. The next item on the agenda is Agenda Changes. I have none. Does anybody from the council have any? I think that, okay. We'll move on to Citizens Forum. This is a time where members of the public can speak on non-agenda items. Is there anybody from the audience who would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Yes, sir.
I'll keep my remarks brief. I know the council has a lot of work to do tonight, but I did want to take the opportunity to introduce myself.
Can you name your name, please?
My name is Chad Ralston from Ward III, and I am running, I'm the Democratic candidate running for State Representative in Ward III this election cycle. Running opposite my friend Walter. Nice to see you, Walter. I'm running for office very simply to do my part in giving back to the community. My background is in finance and technology. I have 23 years of experience as a Vice President of Information Systems for a credit union, and I believe deeply in the philosophy of people helping people, both professionally and personally. So I hope to bring that expertise to bear in crafting legislation that's good for Claremont and New Hampshire. I'm sure all of you are aware by now that Ray Gagnon has been the Rep. in Ward III for the past 12 years and is retiring and not seeking reelection. So I would like to just publicly thank Ray for his many years of service and for his endorsement of me and mentorship. So, thank you, and I hope to see everybody on Tuesday, November 6th, at the polls.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the audience who would like to speak on a non-agenda, yes, a non-agenda item? Seeing none, I'll close Citizens Forum and go on to our business of the evening. This is a special meeting for one purpose only, and that's the discussion of the abatement-assessment process. As I indicated our last council meeting on September 12th, tonight's discussion is going to focus on the process. I understand that the top stone issue was the catalyst for this discussion, but I believe it's important that we all have the information that we need to understand what the process is in order to ask the right questions. We have, the second reason for the meeting is to also consider whether the process that we have is the process that we should maintain or should we modify it. So that, that'll be another question that we'll start to answer as a council. So, the framework that I have organized for tonight to get through this is that the first person to speak will be our legal counsel, Mr. Tanguay, and he will be talking about our, our role and responsibilities as a council as it applies to this assessment-abatement process. Then next, we'll have Mr. Lassard, who will be talking about what, the details of the assessment-abatement process, and then we'll have the city manager speak to what his role is in all of this. And then, once all of that's been done and we have all of the information, then we'll invite the public to speak and comment. And after that is done, then the council will start the work of considering whether the process should stand as is or should it be modified. So I hope that's clear to everybody. Does anybody from the council have any questions before we move on? Yes, Councilor Klosky?
As always, I'd like to recuse myself being a tenant in one of the properties that you are discussing, or was the reason for this original meeting. I would ask you to take a seat in the audience.
Okay.
I also would like to ask if there are any other identified conflict of interest here by any other councilors before I do so.
Okay. Would you like to hear from legal counsel since you asked the, or are you just most comfortable?
I'm just asking if there's any other counselor here who needs to identify anything as that would be perceived as a conflict.
Okay. No, what I meant is, would you like to ask legal counsel whether it's necessary for you to recuse yourself, or is this something you just feel more comfortable doing?
I would feel more comfortable recusing myself. I think it's the proper thing to do.
Legal counsel, is, are there any reasons why, or any reasons that you can think of that would prevent any member of the council sitting for a discussion about the general assessment-abatement process?
I think, given the scope of this meeting as connected by the council, I can't, I don't know of any reason that would be, there would be grounds for recusal of any of the councils.
Okay. Is that clear? Okay. So, could you walk us through what the city council's role and responsibility is as it pertains to the assessment-abatement process?
Sure. In order to do that, I think I'd like to give some legislative history of the, how the abatement process in Claremont works, and then I can explain how the city council factors into this. Pursuant to RSA 76:16, the state legislature provided assessors with the ability to abate taxes for good cause shown. In 2014, that statute was amended by the state legislature to allow for the abatement of any such tax which will include prior year's taxes. So what that allowed towns to do and cities to do prior to, before, prior to that amendment, most municipalities would not abate any taxes other than those that were under appeal or have been applied to for abatement. After the amendment to that statute, municipalities were granted the ability to look at other tax assessments that were not under appeal and to address those if, for example, there were outstanding taxes in prior years that were not under appeal or abatement for that municipality. Pursuant to RSA 49C20, again, the state legislature set forth that a city charter shall provide for the appointment of one or more assessors. Pursuant to that statutory authority, the Claremont City Charter under Article 3, Section 32, sets forth that the city manager shall appoint the assessor or assessors, and then under the city code, under Chapter 2, Article 3, Division 8, Section 2-262, the code sets forth that the, that in setting forth the assessing division for the city of Claremont, the city assessor, one of the city's assessors' powers is to act on all appeals from assessments and sign all appeal forms. So, the statutory, the statutory history of this is that assessors do have the power to abate tax pursuant to the fact that Claremont is a city form of government. The city charter has adopted a method by which that assessor is to be appointed, and that's by and through the city manager. And then furthermore, the city code has authorized the assessor to act on all appeals for and on behalf of the city. So, that's the process by which city, Claremont has historically undertaken tax abatements. In terms of the city council's role in this, the city council plays no role whatsoever in the review or consideration of particular tax appeals. The role of the city council is to, if it so chooses, review the process which is currently in place to see if there's any modifications, changes, or amendments that may be necessary to improve that process. But again, the city council has absolutely no authority pursuant to the charter or state law to consider the merits of any particular abatement application or decision therefrom.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions from the council?
For the council?
Excuse me?
For, for him?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Councilor Hearn?
I got one question, well, maybe more than one, perhaps. I'm just trying to understand, and it's made, it's not made before the abatement, but I'm just trying to understand how the, a private contracted employee is recognized as a city employee.
Well, I think regardless of whether or not the assessor currently is a contract, is a private contractor or an employee, they're serving in the role of the city assessor. They're serving under that, they're serving in that official capacity. And if you look at the charter, the charter clearly indicates that the city manager is in charge of all employees and city officers. So, again, I think that the actual employment status of the particular city assessor is really irrelevant for the purpose of the fact that the city manager is still supervising and overseeing the activities of that particular office.
So I just want to make sure I'm clear. So we could eliminate all the directors and higher private contractors, and they would be employees?
They would be off, well, in certain cases, they would be officers of the city, and in that case, they would be subject to the supervision of the city manager.
Okay. And one more question. Aren't all assessment and paperwork access to the public, open to the public?
In most cases, yes.
So, why is it we can't discuss that paperwork?
Well, because the, the role of the city council is not to review or consider the merits of abatement applications. It's not, that's not prescribed by either the charter or statute.
But can't we have a discussion about it? I mean, and I know we can't do anything about it, it's a done, but why can't there just be a discussion? I'm assuming people are here to discuss that and wanted to see, you know, answer, you know, see why this was done and have, you know, some type of an answer, but I know we can't change it, and I know we can't get into the nuts and bolts, but I just wanted to know why, if it's a public document, that we can't even discuss it.
Well, because the issue that you have here is you have a decision made by the city assessor. The city assessor is supervised by the city manager. Pursuant to the charter, under, I believe, Section 32, there's a non-interference clause between, so that the council, the city council cannot interfere with the direction or supervision of city employees and officers. So what you're doing here is if you were, if the city council were to consider the merits or actions of the city assessor, that possibly could constitute a violation of that non-interference provision.
Councilor Stone?
How exactly does jeopardy attach itself if he's a contracted employee that the city actually cannot fire or hire since it's a, you know, it's a contracted position? And if it's already a done deal where we, as a city, can't do anything to change it, what does jeopardy attach reviewing it after the fact on the merits of what actually took place or transpired to get to that point?
Well, I'm not exactly sure I understand the term jeopardy, but, you know, we're talking about here are the actions of a city officer.
Correct.
And that, that city officer is subject to and under the direction of the city manager. And pursuant to the charter, you cannot interfere with that, that, that relationship. You cannot interfere with the city manager's supervision of that officer.
To clarify, because the decision was already made and we legally can't reverse it, how does that constitute interference if it's already a done deal?
I think what, I think that could be considered that you're, you're, you're looking at this for the purposes of possibly influencing future decisions of the assessor or the relationship between the city manager and the assessor.
I think the future of the assessment is what we're here to discuss tonight, if I'm not mistaken, and the process of how we would reach that. Is that correct or incorrect?
If you're talking about, we are going to be talking about the process, but we're only step one here. So next will be a period of time in which Mr. Lassard will talk about the actual abatement-assessment process and how that's executed. And in, in understanding the whole process, that's when we can start asking the questions. Is this the process we want to have as a city? If, if we are finding that it may be problematic, what are our options to improve upon it?
So we are looking at possibly critiquing our assessment process based on the information gathered tonight?
Yes. That will be the final step. Is that, are the questions appropriately answered? Are we okay? So, Mr. Tanguay was, you know, he's identifying what our legal authorities and responsibilities are. So Mr. Lassard is going to talk about the details of the assessment and abatement process. Mr. Lassard?
Thank you. Because the issue was more focused on abatement than valuation, I don't have a lot to say about valuation, except that it certainly is a complicated process that involves gathering, in the case of valuing a whole municipality, gathering data on what's called a mass appraisal basis, looking at all of the sales that have occurred over a two-year period prior to the valuation date, and looking at income and expenses from, in commercial industrial properties, and, and looking at costs of various building components, et cetera. And so, all of that data is gathered and analyzed, and eventually each property is, value is placed on each property based on that, that data and that analysis. But valuation of a specific property is a judgment, it's a judgment call based on education and experience of the people, or the appraisers, assessors that are doing it. And so, once the valuation is in place, if it's not, if the taxpayer has a question about it, then there is a process to review that. And, and that's mainly what I thought you wanted to hear from me, and so, but I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have regarding valuation or abatement when, when I'm finished here. But, as I said, valuation is a judgment call, and it's based on education and experience of the person doing it. Taxes are not the assessor's job. The assessor's job is value. And taxes are the product of the multiplication of the value of a particular property times the tax rate. And the tax rate is the result of two things, the total value of the town and the amount of the budget, town or city, the amount of the budget that is to be raised through taxes, because some of the budget is raised through other fees, et cetera. But each year, once the taxes are committed in the fall, taxpayers can request an abatement of a portion of their taxes if they believe the assessed value is excessive. Statements about the taxes being too high are not a reason for requesting an abatement. And taxes being high or low isn't what the assessor looks at. If upon review of a property, it's found to be over-assessed, then the solution, because it's already been valued, the solution is to abate a portion of the taxes based upon how much the value was reduced. That is the responsibility of the assessor. If there is still a disagreement between the taxpayer and the assessor, the next step is an appeal to either the Board of Tax and Land Appeals or to Superior Court. The appeal body can either uphold the value that the municipality has, or if they believe that the value is still too high, they can order an additional reduction in, in valuation and an abatement of that amount of taxes that's based on the additional valuation reduction. And over the years, abatements have been made to correct values as a result of the assessor's review, as a result of the review of appeal bodies' decisions, and as a result of negotiations between the assessor and the taxpayer. Once an appeal is filed, the issue is, is still about the correct value, not about the amount of taxes. However, it can be a bit different once an appeal is in place if there's an opportunity to negotiate a settlement. And with the Board of Tax and Land Appeals, whenever anybody files their, they always require a meeting between the taxpayer and the, and the assessor to see if there is an ability to settle the issue. But typically, some issues that are not part of how a value is determined in the first place may become relevant in settlement negotiations, such as the city not wanting to take ownership of the property, or the quality of the data supporting the assessor's opinion, such that the assessor thinks he has a good case, but maybe it's not a great case. So even though he thinks the value is X, he might negotiate a settlement of Y with the taxpayer, thinking the taxpayer may also be in the same place, thinking his value is good, but maybe a little higher would, would work for both people. So, that is the, the process that has been used, or the three, really, processes that have been used in the past, and certainly by me in other places, and, and here as well. Certainly be glad to, to answer any questions that you may have.
Sure. So, who would like to start? Assistant Mayor Dameron?
I have a couple. Just for curiosity, what's the time period after an abatement application is filed? How soon do you have to get back to and at least acknowledge that to the property taxpayer? Is there a set period of time?
The statute requires that abatement requests can't be made until the final bill in the fall is mailed. Once it's mailed, the taxpayer has until March 1st to file the appeal, and once that's done, the, the assessor is supposed to get back to them by July 1st of the, the year following the tax bill. But the statute indicates that if that doesn't happen, if the taxpayer has not heard, that at that point, after July 1st, they can appeal it to a, to a higher level.
Okay. And if a taxpayer appeals, you mentioned both Superior Court and the Bureau of Land and Tax Appeal. It's my understanding that if you're going to appeal, you can only appeal to one, you can't appeal to both of them?
That is correct. It's one or the other.
All right. And very lastly, I would imagine the process or the system of coming up with assessments for residential property is markedly different from that you would use for establishing assessments for, let's say, the Common Man Restaurant. How would you go about establishing something for the Common Man Restaurant?
Well, with, with commercial properties, there, there is the same process as for residential properties, which is to review sales. The problem with that is they usually aren't sales, not enough to make a value judgment about, about a property which obviously isn't going to be exactly the same. And, so, in addition to sales, with commercial industrial properties, you can also look at what's called an income approach to valuation, where you look at the income and the expenses of the property, not, not of the business. So, say like a McDonald's restaurant, we're not looking at how many hamburgers they're selling and valuing their business, we're, we're looking at the real estate. What can the real estate rent for? And what, what are the expenses to the real estate? And through that process, there's a, there's a process that's called capitalization. Through, through a process of capitalization, you can take that information and arrive at a value by what's called, as I say, the income approach. That is a, another approach to, to valuing properties that, that have an income. The, the third approach, which is also applicable to residential or commercial industrial, is what's called the cost approach, to look at sales of land, to arrive at the land values, and then to look at the cost of building a replacement of the structure that's there. The biggest problem with cost approach is that as soon as it's built, it starts to depreciate, and so then there is a, an estimate of depreciation that you have to make. And, and with, with properties, there is also the, the possibility that there are such things in, in a new property even, certainly in older properties, but even in a new property, there are such things that might be called obsolescence, things that just don't function the way the typical market wants things to function, in terms of, for residences, maybe placement of bathrooms of certain rooms, and, and other things. So the cost approach is, is tough even when property is new, but it's extremely tough when property is not new. But those are the three approaches to value, and, and the income approach is the one that typically we fall to for commercial industrial property, if, if there's that information. Even, just as I said, there's sometimes a problem finding enough sales to do the sales approach. Sometimes there's enough, there's a, there's a tough time getting enough income and expense information to arrive at, at a value anyways. But whether we have the information or not, we have to arrive at a value as best we can from the information that we have.
Sure. Thank you. You're welcome.
Other questions? Councilor Hearn?
I want to go back to, well, maybe a timeline. Let's just give a hypothetical date. Let's say I submitted a application January 1st of this year. Walk me through the timeframe and when that answer would be given.
If you filed for an abatement in January, and there was adequate staffing to handle those, then with, within a couple of months, an appointment would be made to inspect the property, to ensure that the data that the town has on its property record card is accurate, and if not, correct it. And that may, if that's the problem, if that, if that is, in fact, the case, that may be what, what the problem is, and it may correct the solution. I mean, may be the solution. If that's, once that's done, if that's not the remedy, then the information that you provided in your abatement application, whether it be comparable sales, or whether, whatever information it is that you're providing, is reviewed, and hopefully, way before July 1st, if you've applied in January, maybe April, May, you would get the, the assessor's response.
Okay. Follow?
Mm-hmm.
So if there's no answer by July 1st, under the RSA, it says no, if no response is, constitutes a denial?
That's correct.
Okay. So hypothetically saying, could a, my application could not run for a year and a half or more than a year?
I'm not sure what you mean.
Could an application go longer than, from January to July 1st?
After July 1st, decisions can still be made with regard to abatements, if that's your question.
Yes.
And they can be made, they can be made, well, if, if there is not an appeal beyond September 1st, I mean, by, by the, September 1st, then, then a couple of things could happen. If, if, if the assessor is still reviewing it and feels that there was a, an error, he could still obviously correct it. But by the same token, if he felt that there wasn't an error, at that point, it would be too late for the taxpayer to file an appeal.
May I, so, so if I understand you correctly, it's past July, and perhaps the person didn't hear a thing, so that constitutes a denial? So the applicant has till September to appeal?
That's correct.
So, the appeal will go to either the Board of Land and Tax Appeals or to Superior Court?
Correct. Let me just say one thing.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not sure that constitutes a denial is the right word, but it's presumed to be denied. The taxpayer can presume that it is denied.
Okay.
And, and, but, but obviously, it doesn't mean that it is denied, because it still could be granted subsequent to that date. So I just wanted to make that clear.
So the applicant presumes it's denied, he goes to make the appeal. The Board of Land and Tax Appeals, would they at that point reach out to you, being the local assessor, and say something to the effect of, have you tried to mediate this? Or negotiate something?
Do they actually issue orders? First thing that they do when they receive First thing that they do when they receive the appeal request is to send a form to the municipality, asking a few questions. And one of them is like, if towns still use the inventory farm, not many do, but that's one of the questions they ask. Do you use the inventory farm? If they did, did the taxpayer file the inventory? And they ask questions like that. What was the assessment of the property that's been appealed? Do they own any other property? And what's the assessment of those properties? So, they ask a bunch of questions first, and then they decide that it does need to be heard, that it's a valid appeal, I guess, perhaps a better term. And so, they then notify both parties. It's an order. They order you to see if there is the opportunity to sell. You either have to meet by phone, or in person, or whatever, in an attempt to settle. And those appeals, you know, they give you a date by which to do it. I'm not sure what that timeframe is, but it's probably in the vicinity of six months that they give you in order to mediate or to attempt to settle.
And if that doesn't happen, then the applicant would go to whichever body he or she chose to do, either the Board of Land and Tax Appeals or Superior Court?
Right, but that decision would already have been made. That process is only the Board of Tax and Land Appeals, that mediation process?
Oh, I see. Okay.
Is with the Board of Tax and Land Appeals. So, yes, if that doesn't happen, there is a form that both parties need to sign, send it in, saying, you know, settlement, I mean, mediation did not result in settlement. So, a hearing is required. So, then they put it on their calendar to schedule a hearing.
Okay.
And just to clarify, Madam Mayor, there is a requirement under Superior Court rules to do alternative dispute resolution. So, like the BTLA, if there was an appeal to the Superior Court here in Sullivan, there would be an order requiring some form of mediation to occur between the parties prior to going to trial.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to clarify, just want a clarification, because I heard the word presumed, and I don't see that in the RSA, because it says the failure to respond shall constitute a denial, shall, is not presumed. So, are we not following the RSA when you?
No, no. I guess, I haven't read that statute real recently, and I don't question that it says exactly what you just read. I just was trying to indicate that it isn't too late to still, to grant the abatements. So, to me, when an abatement is denied, it, okay, but in this case, the timeframe doesn't cause it to be ended, the assessor could still grant the abatement. And that's what I was trying to point out.
If the applicant didn't file for the appeal? If the applicant didn't file for the appeal, it's what you're saying, if I understand you correctly, it's still in play as far as?
Yes, but he doesn't have to file until September, and we're talking about a July 1st date.
Right. Okay. Councilor Stone?
In the general course of business, if an appeal is filed with either the Superior Court, or if it's filed with the dispute board in Concord, would that record of filing be returned to the city as a copy to be added with the packet for the abatement or application?
The appeal form that they file, it needs to be filed with the town as well, yes.
So, we receive a copy, just like you would normally in a court case, you'd both, all parties involved would receive a copy, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Questions, Councilor Kier?
I just want to make sure I understand correctly. So, a taxpayer requests an abatement, the city denies it, they appeal it, and then we are required to try to come to a compromise, even though we're not sure that the hearing will go in the taxpayer's interest?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure answer is yes.
Okay. I just want to check, it seems off.
Councilor Hearn?
Another question. Does the assessor at any time get any direction from the city manager?
I can't, I guess, I need direction about what?
Property and assessment. Does the city manager ever contact, let's say hypothetically, in your course of being here, was there any direction from the city manager? Or was it, you just did your job?
In terms of abatements, no. I've never been directed to either grant or not grant an abatement. But certainly, there is direction of the office in terms of how things operate, whether it be opening and closing time or whatever. There are directions from the manager, but not with regard to an abatement.
Thank you.
Are there any other, yes, Councilor Kier?
So, just kind of on that vein, can you correct me if I'm wrong? Contract employees, you can't really give much direction to as their day-to-day work structure, correct? Legally, they're kind of an entity on their own? In a way? Am I wrong?
I guess it would depend on the nature of the contract itself, and I don't, I'm not familiar with what MRI has contracted with the city of Claremont. But then again, I would anticipate that if the city were paying money to MRI for the services of Mr. Lassard, there would be some substantial direction in terms of hours of the office, when, what Mr. Lassard should be doing in his capacity as city assessor. So, that doesn't get, that doesn't go away just because he's a contract employee or contractor, or, you know, the city manager still has the ability to manage and supervise that office.
Thank you.
Councilor Pope?
Mr. Tangi, could you please remind me of what RSA that was for the forgiveness of past taxes?
Sure, that's RSA 76:16.
As a follow-up to that question, either Mr. Lassard or Leo Council, when taxes are abated, does that include not only the abated property taxes, but penalties and interest that may be accrued?
Typically, yes. If a taxpayer pays the full tax, and a portion of it is abated, then the town has to pay interest to the taxpayer for the money that they've held of theirs, okay? If the taxpayer has not paid, and it is beyond the due date, then interest accrues. And a portion, if a portion of it is abated, then the taxpayer does not have to pay the interest on the portion, the interest that has accumulated on the portion that's abated. If it hasn't been paid, there would be interest and costs that need to be paid that's related to the final correct amount.
Okay. Does the whole issue is based on value? Okay.
Yeah, essentially, well, obviously, we're not dealing with any penalties here, because otherwise, that would be, unless it was a tax deed of some sort. But in most cases regarding tax abatements, you either have the tax itself or the interest that's accrued if it hasn't been paid. Assuming it has not been paid, the town is, you know, then the taxpayer is liable for that tax, the interest on that tax for which it is not abated. Does that make it clear? Those tax dollars that are abated are obviously not subject to interest payments.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Other questions? Yes, Assistant Mayor Derron.
Yeah, just refresh me as to the date. In RSA 7616, the ability to abate any such tax shall include, quote, "prior year's taxes"? That was a legislative change in 2010?
I believe it's 2014.
2014?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Now, the statute says for good cause, but is there any, I mean, when you're thinking about good cause, what does that encompass? Anything?
Well, there are prescribed criteria by the court as to what good cause shown could be. The most common one is obviously fair market value, because, you know, the requirement by this city assessor and all assessors in New Hampshire is that they have to assess the property based upon fair market value. And so, that's usually the criteria by which abatements are applied for, in most cases. So, again, that's really the primary driving factor for, I would say, probably 95 to 99% of all abatements, is the issue of fair market value. You know, they've assessed, they've over-assessed me, my property can never sell for X, and so that's usually the reason for that. There are other factors that can establish good cause shown. For example, poverty can be one of those. You know, the inability to pay your taxes can actually be a reason to abate, but primarily, it has to do with fair market value.
If I may, it's recently, again, been changed by the legislature, but previous to it, and I don't know if that was in 2016 or not, but prior to the change, if someone's house burned, taxes are assessed as of April 1st. If your house is half complete on April 1st, your bill for the year is based on it being half complete. If it's totally complete on April 1st, then your taxes are based on it being complete. If it burns down on April 2nd, you're technically liable for taxes for the full year, because it was there on April 1st. Prior to this change, some communities would abate for damaged property partway through the year. Other communities did not. But the legislature has changed such that there is a specific process for people whose properties are damaged partway through the year to file for an abatement. It's a little bit of a different process, but, so, I mean, that was something that was done, quote, unquote, "for good cause."
Okay.
So, there might be something like that still that could happen.
Thank you. Councilor, Councilor Zul.
So, correct me if I'm thinking about this thought process wrong. Say, I'm running a business, I have a bad year in business, and didn't make a profit. I can abate my taxes because I'm at the poverty level, or not turning a profit, so I can't afford to pay my taxes?
Well, the issue of poverty is one that's, it's technically on the books, but the question, I guess there's two questions there. One is that the inability to pay taxes is, can be good cause for seeking an abatement. But again, that requires a showing of truly, you know, poverty situation. In terms of a business not doing well in a particular year, that in and of itself does not necessarily mean that you're subject to an abatement, because as Mr. Lassard pointed out, the point is not to value the business on the property, it's to value the business, the property itself. So, if you have a failing business, that does not necessarily mean that your property value goes lower, because, you know, there could be reasons for the business failing, poor management, just bad economic times, what have you. But that doesn't mean that the value of the property necessarily is going to decrease. It can, but it's not, it's not analogous to that, right? It doesn't follow that logic necessarily. So, for example, you could have a failing mechanics business on the property, but yet it's worth a million dollars because Rite Aid is looking to buy it, or that there's interest in that area for a particular use of a property for some other purpose. So, the value of the land has been maintained, even though the business that's currently on there may be failing.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Go ahead, Andy.
Go ahead, I got to remember what my question was.
Okay. Now, one of the RSAs that I was paying attention to was RSA 7619A, and how does that play into any assessments for municipalities?
I certainly don't know him by number, although I'm not sure what it deals with. Certainly, contamination is something that affects value, so it is something that needs to be considered when you are looking at the value of a property that may have contamination or does have contamination.
And what it also does, it provides some flexibility in which the abatement can actually be provided. There, you know, it sort of negates the timeframes that we've just discussed in terms of when those abatements can be applicable. So, again, this is a special, this is a special provision in the statute. It's very rarely utilized. I mean, obviously, you have to have a Brownfield site to qualify, but it does, it does two things. It takes away the timeframe of abatement, and also, it also allows for prior year's taxes and interest to be abated when there's, when justice inequity apply. Now, again, that statute was effective prior to the change to 7616. So, that was an important situation at the time, because the problem was that you had with Brownfield sites is, you know, the value had, the value was impacted by the fact that there was hazardous material there. So, the reason for this particular statute was to allow those owners of those properties to seek abatements for multiple years, and receive that relief in order to effectuate the cleanup of the property. But without, but prior to 2014, as I indicated to the council, the ability to deal with taxes that were not under appeal was non-existent. So, for example, if that change had not occurred in 2014, and you had someone appeal in 2017, but had years, had issues with the assessment from 14 to 16, the only thing the city would be able to do was address the 17 tax year. With the change now, the city does have the ability to go back in those following years to address those taxes.
Okay. Counselor, no. Did you want to do a follow-up?
I wanted to do a quick follow-up. Part of the statutory language, I'm sure you just read the RSA on it, says it's the governing body of the municipality may make the abatement for a prior year taxes and cure the interest to the applicant, as it shall deem just inequitable. What's your legal opinion on that?
I think what that is in reference to is, if you look at 7616, it talks about the selectmen or assessors. So, I assume what the legislature was doing there was making a reference to that, 7616, which, you know, in most cases, the selectmen are the governing body of the town. I think when you deal with a city form of government, that governing body would have to be that which is, would be the assessors in this case, as opposed to, because the difference with a city is that the city council is not really the governing body of the city. In some cases it is, in some cases it's not. It also serves as the legislative body of the city. That's different than town, the town form of government, whereby the selectmen are the governing body, and the town meeting, you know, as everyone's familiar with, is the legislative body. So, I would articulate that the reference to that statute is more to do with towns, and then its application to cities would have to do with the assessors.
Counselor Pope?
I'll go back to 7619, abatement for Brownfield properties. The statement in the RSA upon application of a person who qualifies as eligible to participate in the Brownfield program, is eligibility determined by them actually having applied, or is it that known contamination is there even if they haven't applied?
I would argue that they would have to be accepted to Brownfield to be subject to that tax abatement under 7619A. But I'd also say that really, 7619A is sort of an antiquated statute at this point because of the change to 7616, because the benefit to this particular statute at the time was that someone that did have a property that had hazardous material, and who was struggling under the weight of, say, a large assessment or taxes that they simply could not pay, this provided them with an ability to get relief from those taxes in order to clean up the property. That's the intention. That's the intention of this statute. Now, with the amendment to 7616, essentially, any municipality has the ability to address any taxes that may be inequitable during an abatement process.
Counselor O'Hearn?
I have a point of order. I'm kind of confused where, I thought this was the question and answering of questions towards the assessor or the acting assessor. It just seems that the attorney seems to be answering. I understand if the assessor that can't answer the question, then we'll go to the attorney, but it just seems that these, a lot of questions are being answered by the attorney and not by even giving the assessor the opportunity to answer. So, I'm going to specifically ask this to the assessor. Okay. First question. What is your definition of to abate? When you abate, what is the definition from you?
To provide relief from having to pay some portion of the tax.
Okay, thank you. Follow-up? What's your definition of assessment? Assessing?
Is the value that is placed on the property.
Okay. And I only have two more questions for this. And this is a generic question. And it would be a generic question in your time here because I can't, I don't know what you've done beyond this, but in your time here, how often do you abate and reassess the property?
At the same time? I'm sorry, at the same time?
Yes.
The abatement is a result of the changed assessment, so they're at the same time. If a property is valued at a hundred thousand dollars and upon review, I believe it ought to be fifty thousand, then there is an abatement granted for half of the tax.
So, so, follow-up is what you're saying is that every time you re-abate any property that somebody's asked to get rid of their past taxes, you're going to reassess the property?
For there to be an abatement, there has to be a, a changed value. Let's just say there are some cases where the value for the next year may be the same. As a, for instance, a house that's under construction, we may think it's seventy-five percent complete, so we assess it as seventy-five percent complete. Evidence is provided after the bill goes out that it was, you know, fifty percent complete. And for the next year, it really is seventy-five percent complete. And so, the assessment for the following year may not have changed, but the assessment that was applicable to the timeframe does change.
Okay. And one final question. Do you ever get any legal attorney input to any assessment or abatements?
With regard to my time here, no.
Thank you.
Other questions? Before we move on to the city manager, I just had one final question. And I'm not sure who should answer this because maybe Mr. Lassard knows the answer, maybe Leo Council, maybe both. But in 2014, when we had the revaluation of the city, if memory serves me correctly, there were more than two instances of commercial property being really assessed significantly higher than before the evaluation. How, what's the mechanism that should be in play to, one, identify that, but also to really look at that and say, well, we should do something, it deserves more scrutiny because the city's paying for a company to do the evaluation and there's a presumption that it's going to be done correctly. Now, I know, according to the statutes and all the literature, you know, mistakes are going to happen. Nothing's really perfect. But when that, when you have such a varying degree of assessed value, what should happen?
Well, part of, part of the revaluation process is, is towards the end, there are a variety of reports that are presented, created, if you will. And, and one of them is a percentage change. And let's just, let's report. And so, let's just say that, that the overall value of the town went up twenty percent. So, individually, you're going to have properties that, that have actually gone down a little, you're going to have some that have gone up a little, you're going to have a lot that are in that twenty percent range, but you're also going to have some that are double or half because something happened either in the market to affect a category of property or to a specific property that changed it. I mean, a lot of times in reviewing that report, what we find is, oh, it was a vacant piece of land last year and this year it's got a house on it, you know, it's got a business on it. But if you're talking about a property that already existed and it changes significantly, when reviewing that report, you dig out the information on that and say, hey, is this correct or not? So, I mean, there should be a double check on that new value prior to it being a finalized value. And if that double check says, makes, you know, makes sense, then you wouldn't change it, but you might, well, find that somebody, you know, somebody's tennis court was put in as, you know, six hundred square feet, but tennis courts are priced per each. So, when it calculated, it's calculated six hundred times as much as it should have. I mean, that, those kinds of things, not that specific thing, but those kinds of things can happen. And so, that's why you run these reports and that's why you check anything that seems to be out of whack with what you would, what you would think.
So, other than the assessor, who would see those reports and what kind, kind of action-taking report would be generated? I mean, is that something totally done within, in the administration?
Generally, it is, but it, you know, it can be whatever, whatever the, the overall administrative person is. If manager says, you know, I want to see those reports, or I want the council or the selectmen to see those reports, you know, so it's, it's really a matter of, of the process that's put in place, if you will.
And then my last, is there any other questions? Other? Yes, John?
Go ahead, I'll ask after.
Okay. My last question is, it's, you may not have the answers because you've only been here since when?
April.
April, okay. I would be interested to know if you have the information, how, what is the total dollar value of, of abatements for the year to date?
It is, it is hard to give you by year because there are three different kinds of years that we deal with. One is the tax year. It goes from April 1st to March 30th. The other one is the calendar year, obviously, and then the third one is your fiscal year, which goes from July 1st to June 30th. So, so, when you say the year, there is a, there is a process of numbering abatements and, if I can find the right piece of paper here that I want, and there is a process of, of when you start numbering them, whether it be April 1st or whether it be July 1st or whatever. So, what I can tell you is that for the, for the 2017, abatements that were reviewed in far 2017, some of them would have been granted back as early perhaps as December of 17, all the way through just recently.
Okay.
And, and so, there have been fifty-seven and twenty-two, so that's seventy-nine, seventy-nine abatements since December of 17 totaling nine-hundred-and-eighty-plus-thousand dollars.
Thank you. Counselor O'Hearn?
Sorry, I have another question. Just came in.
Oh, wait a minute.
No, let's go ahead.
Okay, all right. Go ahead.
And it may be a follow-up. So, Mr. Lassard, as the assessor, do you communicate during any of your process with the city clerk?
Yes, in her position as tax collector.
Okay. Maybe I should be a little concerned. During a, an abatement process, when it's coming to the July 1st and it's denied and there's still a process, which I assume there's a paper trail if there is a appeal, is the city clerk involved or maintained with that knowledge of that?
I would say that typically she does not know who, at least all of the people who have applied for abatements. She, she becomes aware, obviously, when the abatement is made and given to her to process the abatement.
Would she in turn be in contact with you if she had some properties that she was involved with taxes that you were dealing with?
I can't think of a specific case, but, but she calls me sometimes about things and I call her sometimes about things.
Counselor Stone?
Just to clarify, who actually reviews your work product?
In terms of review, I'm not aware that anybody specifically reviews all of the abatements that I do. Quite often, you know, the manager is aware of them because, you know, they, we may have discussed them for one reason or another, but I don't believe, although the record is public and the access to the, to the storage of the abatements is certainly available, I'm not aware that anybody has gone in and reviewed all of the abatements that have been made other by Marlene or myself.
Counselor Stone? Yep?
So, you started in April. What's your, what was your typical schedule? Was it once a week?
Two days a week, generally. I have been here three days in some weeks, like this one, and I have been here, none, several weeks because of the commitments that I had. But generally, I am here two days a week. Generally, that's a Wednesday and a Thursday or a Thursday and a Friday.
And in your absence, the assessing office is still open?
The assessing office is, is open with Kim in the office on, you know, on a regular basis, if you will. Her hours are a little different than some of the other offices and without coverage for vacation or whatever, it's closed at times. But generally, there's somebody there every week when I, even though I'm not.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to the city manager.
Okay.
Again, it's just an explanation of your role in the whole process, how you've...
My role is more at the fifty-thousand foot unless I have to dive into something. So, I don't really have a prepared statement. If folks have questions of me, I'm more than willing to answer them to the best of my ability.
Mr. Lassard mentioned that there is not a formal review of all of the abatements that he grants.
Mm-hmm.
At what point in time do you follow or are aware of certain situations?
Usually on the larger ones, most all of the commercial ones or industrial ones. If there's a really tricky residential one, they, they might run it past me and, you But as he mentioned, there's, you know, there's been seventy-something abatements, so the vast majority of those are pretty pro forma and they align to the process and they get adjudicated through the process.
And I'm not sure if this is a legal question or for Mr. McNutt, but is there an ever, since you've been the city manager, has there ever been an instant where, and I don't even know if it's a possibility, where you have reversed a decision or asked the assessor to re, relook a decision? I don't even know if that's legally possible.
I don't remember any instances where I've asked somebody to reverse something. I know there was one about a year ago that Marlene was having trouble with. It was a residential one. It was like a really odd property. It had a really strange selling price or there were some, there was, there was something unique about it. So, both Marlene and I went to the BTLA because that's where it was appealed to. It was my introduction to the BTLA, so I kind of tagged along with her because I just wanted to understand what that was. It's a, it's a different process in Massachusetts. So, yeah, no, I mean, I can't think of any where I've asked anybody to reverse anything.
Okay.
I don't really see that as my place.
And Mr. Tankway, is that, is that even a, a role that the city manager can play in legal terms?
Yeah, I see no role within the charter or statute that would allow the city manager to reverse the decision of the assessor. Of course, as the city manager and possibly the finance director of the city, obviously there's a, there's an interest to know when money is being, when taxes are being abated because obviously that means less money coming into the city. So, my expectation would be that the city manager is in consultation with the assessor often about, especially the larger abatement issues because that ultimately affects the bottom line of the, of the city. So, I'm sure while he doesn't have a, a direct role in the ability to negate or affirm a tax abatement, he certainly does have a role as the manager to ensure that essentially the, the city assessor is doing his job in a proper fashion and not, you know, giving abatements out at whim, thereby affecting the financial or economic health of the city.
Okay, thank you. Did, I think Counselor Stone has her one up first.
This is for Mr. Lassard. During the April timeframe that you came to work for the city, how many mediation cases for tax abatements did you actually handle?
I honestly can't give you a, a specific number. There were a number of, I'm going to say a dozen and a half, two dozen, that were already started some kind of process. So, that's my, that's my best guess that I could give you is somewhere between fifteen and twenty, a dozen and a half to two dozen.
Thank you.
Counselor O'Hearn?
For the city manager. You said you'd stay fifty foot or fifty feet from the office of the assessor, so you don't really have any involvement?
No, it was a turn-of-art phrase that I used. I try to stay at the fifty-thousand-foot view.
Okay. So, then the assessor does answer to you?
Correct.
Okay. And, but there's not really as much, you know, because he does his thing, right?
No.
Okay. Well, he's only, he's only here two or three days a week and sometimes none. So, who manages the assessor's office in the absence of the assessor?
The assessor.
But the assessor's not there, how can he be made? But the assessor's not there, how can he be overseeing it?
Because in today's technological environment, it's not difficult to stay in touch with your office, even if you are not physically there at that specific moment.
Okay, so you're saying that we're moving towards the assessor being not in the office and being outside and just logging in?
No, that's not what I said. What is the specific question that you have?
I was asking questions, and I don't appreciate the replied attitude.
Okay, but I'm not understanding your question.
I'm trying to understand if we are understaffed in there or what's going on in that office because I've heard that, you know, it's closed sometimes at odd hours. And I'm just trying to understand, are things falling through the crack, and are you overseeing it?
Yes, we are in the process of hiring a new permanent assessor. The assessor that we use in the interim is not available forty hours a week. We have assessing technician that does work in that office. But yes, the city manager is responsible for all of the departments.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Everybody satisfied because at this point we'll open up for the public. Before we do that, just legal counsel, Mr. Lasard, anything else that you would like to say? No?
Who'd prefer them?
Okay, so we have a lot of people here. I would ask that everybody, respect everybody else's time, and if something's been said, it would be helpful if you wanted to add something, that it was something new that hasn't been already said, if we have a lot of people who would like to speak. This is just for the interest of everybody's time. Who would like to speak? Yes. So Counselor Pope's question was five-minute rule, are we following that? And yes, that's the maximum amount of time. And then we'll go through, everybody has a chance once, and then if people want to speak again, then we'll do that. Mr. Osgood?
Joe Osgood, Ward two. We just had a nice work session on an overview of how the abatement process works, but we haven't even started on what my question was last week, and that's the Topstone Building. I was on two charter commissions. We were advised by attorneys when I was on them charter commissions that the charter cannot overrule state law. Section 7616 clearly states that upon receipt of an application under paragraph one, the selectman, which in this case would be the council or the assessor, shall review the application and shall grant for good cause or deny the application in writing by July first after notice of tax date. The failure to respond shall constitute a denial. So if this abatement wasn't clarified by July first, under New Hampshire state law, it was a denial, so it would have had to be reopened as far as I'm concerned. That's one thing. And the other thing that's in this sentence that means a whole lot to me is just cause. We have an assessor that makes a just cause decision, and he's the only one that gets to tell whether or not it's just cause. I have a problem with that because I know his mother doesn't live in Clermont, but if she did, she could be paying a whole lot less taxes than anybody else because his just cause is my mother shouldn't be paying taxes. There's got to be a mechanism to research the abatement, find out what was given for reason, so that a determination whether or not just cause fell into play when the abatement was made. It was mentioned that all of this paperwork is public. Can somebody go in and say, "I want the full packet for the abatement process"? Because they should be able to go in there and find all documentation, and somebody should not be able to go in there and verbally say what they want, and then the assessor say, "Oh yeah, that's just cause, we're out of here." That's state law, and it can't be overruled by the charter. The other thing that is state law and can't be overruled by the charter, I'm sticking with the Topstone property. You people had your work session, now I'm talking for, as I think a member of the public and maybe a few people here, I see head shaking. Okay. This property was well-known to the manager. I don't know about the assessor. I don't know if you watched the council meetings. It was very well-known that the council was concerned that this is a brownfield. So all of a sudden, it's got a labeled brownfield, and if you go on the state website, it is labeled a brownfield. There was multiple communications here at the council meeting about this being a brownfield, and then there was some stuff that was kind of ringing true to me. Some of these people were asking good questions on how do we get to the bottom of this? And then, all of a sudden, and I think it was after July first, we get this notice, and I'm not sure exactly where it came from, correct me if I'm wrong, but all of the taxes went away. I'm going back to state law and the charter. You mentioned that section nineteen A, seventy-six nineteen A, was negated by section seventy-six sixteen. If the lawmakers wanted that to be negated, it would say repealed there. I was a state rep, I know what happens to laws. So that law is very clear, and I don't think they were unclear about it. Upon application of a person who qualifies as eligible to participate in a brownfield program established under RSA 147F, the governing body, doesn't say the assessor and the manager, it says the governing body of the municipality may make an abatement of prior year's taxes under accrued interest to the applicant as it shall be deemed just inequitable. Governing body, not the assessor. I have a question on the way this was presented as to lowering the value of the property. We lowered the value of the property, now we can adjust the tax to the amount that we lowered the value of the property. Did we assess the Topstone building for ten years at zero? In order to lower the taxes to the value of the property, you'd have to assess it at zero for ten years to make the tax bill go away. Us people in this town are a little bit irritated. We watch city government, it gets us a little irritated, like it looks like things are going on behind the scenes, and then all of a sudden, something like this happens, and $222,000 goes away. I have a problem with that, and I think there's some people in this room that have a problem with that, especially under state law. The governing body should have had a say in this. Instead, they were trying to make a statement about it, and then it went away behind my back, and I'm going to give you another chance. Did anybody know this was coming until that day?
I think we've already said...
Okay, so it went away without the governing body. I have a problem with that. This community tries to tell people, "Speak up about your community, it's a beautiful community." And it is, it's got good things about it. But you don't run a government when you've got people irritated over things like this. This is serious, it's very serious.
That's why we call a special meeting.
And we just barely got to the special meeting, by the way, and we're an hour into it because you had your work session. And you know what? It's good because now you can make decisions on how are we going to hear about this the next time? And maybe it's good that this came up, but I'm concerned about how all that money can go away under even the guidelines that were just given to us, zero dollars under a lowered assessment. I'm not, I don't agree with the lowered assessment. I did my own little research about looking at buildings that compare to that building, and we still got that lower. That's the other thing. I'm having trouble with this because I had questions through the whole thing, and now you get up, I get up here and you say, "Okay, now that's your turn." Maintenance of the building, when the maintenance of the building...
Are we past five minutes?
Yeah. Can we?
Does the council...
I'd like to extend, we can do that.
Does the council want to extend the time?
Yes.
If the maintenance of the building was a reason for lowering the assessment, are we like sending a message to people? Don't maintain your building, and all of a sudden, your taxes can go down, just file for an abatement? Are we setting a precedence when we lower the assessment on a building because it's got mechanical problems, roof problems, driveway problems, and all that stuff? Are we setting a precedence to get a bunch of other people in here that have older buildings, and gracefully, they're paying their taxes, but if we made a big change in this building, are we unfair to them if we don't do the same thing for the other people that come in here and ask for an assessment? We've got a problem with that. And I have to assume, I'm sorry, I have to assume on something, but I have to assume that the brownfield is a big part of this assessment lowering, and if it is, it wasn't done legally. I could go on, but I'm a little irritated, and if it doesn't show, I am. I'm going to give other people a chance to talk. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes.
Marie Luzito, Ward one. Okay, you also said that you wanted to look at, did you need to change the process? You said there were seventy-nine abatements totaling nine-hundred-and-some-odd dollars, nine-hundred-and-thousand-some-odd dollars, one of which was $222,000. Now, excuse me, that's a large amount of money, it's not chicken feed. I would think that when you look at the process and see if you need to change something, at the very minimum, the council should be reviewing any major abatements like that. I mean, that you people are the ones who are supposed to be running the city, the manager manages the departments, but to just let one person in his little department on his own with his policies and standards decide to abate that much money in one abatement, I mean, that's a little insane. I would think on his part, he would have said, "You know, this is pretty big, how about it, city manager? Is this going to be a problem?" And it should have certainly been spoken to the city council, I would think. And so when you people start to look at, "Do you need to change the process?", I think you have to put in something about major abatements being considered and presented to the council because that's practically a quarter of a million dollars. Just gone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. LaCass?
Paul LaCass, Ward two. First of all, I'd like a chronicle explanation how the billing went from six-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand or something like that down to one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars. That's about seventy-five percent reduction in the cost of the building. So with the last speaker just said, it's more than a quarter of a million dollar reduction. It's a quarter of a million dollar reduction because we just forgave the taxes. Then we turned around and gave them seventy-five percent of the building value away. What constituted giving an abatement of seventy-five percent of that building? Is it no roof, no windows, no doors, no heat? Or maybe the building should be just plain condemned? And there is a solution to having one person making these assessment solutions, what they call the board of adjusters, which you can set up as a town, a three or five member board, it's a board of assessors. They come up and they look at all the property, and they debate it publicly, and then they have a public input, and then you wouldn't have this problem. This was suggested a few years ago, but nobody wanted it. Now you've got a big problem. But I would like to know the answer to how a building goes from a hundred percent down to less than a quarter of it.
Counselor Zulu?
Would it be appropriate for Mr. Lasard to answer these questions? I mean, the public does have the right to know.
Well, I'll go to legal counsel first.
Again, I don't think that that's appropriate at this point in time for the sole reason that, again, the city assessor answers to the city manager, and I don't think it would be proper to use this venue to question the performance of the city assessor because it's not the role of the council nor really the public to determine his performance. It's really left to the city manager. So I'm really concerned about the non-interference provision of the charter if we do allow questions as to why this was done and the criteria for it.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to follow up on that. This is supposed to be a public meeting, and this is supposed to be public knowledge. So why can't I get an answer to that question?
I think the issue...
It has nothing to do with the city council. I am asking a question of the city assessor.
Well, the fact that someone asks a question does not entitle them to an answer. You know, there's no legal obligation under... The fact, the truth of the matter is there's no legal obligation for a city official to answer that question.
And Mrs. Mayor, could I make that a ninety-one A request?
Yes, but I think what legal counsel is trying to do is, the legal counsel works for the benefit of the city council as well as the city. In this case, we're having a city council meeting, and he's trying to guide us with regard to the non-interference clause, which you well... Wait a minute, I'll get to it. Which you well know, any interference by any member of the council would require us to vacate our seat if it was found to be true. That's what legal counsel is trying to do tonight to ensure that we don't go awry of that section of our charter. As far as right-to-know requests on all of these documents that Mr. Tankway has already said is public information, we can have the city manager talk about that process if you would like tonight, or you can submit the right-to-know, but that can't be done at this meeting.
Why can't it be done at this meeting? This is a public meeting, is it not? And this is public information.
It's not the process that is followed for...
My understanding is state law doesn't necessarily mean it has to be done at a specific time. This is a public meeting, and I'm asking a legitimate question.
And I gave you an answer. We have, we're here tonight to discuss the whole process. I understand people are upset, and they have every right to be. There is clearly something wrong with the process.
And I do have a problem with the city...
Wait, please, please. I'm trying to respond to your concerns.
Okay. But I do have an issue.
It was important whether it was, it was important for everybody to have the same foundation of information before we looked to how the process should be modified because it's clearly not what we want.
Well, I've got two questions.
The process for right-to-know requests, the city manager can talk about that, you can make that request to the city clerk or the administrative assistant. But we're here to talk about this process and try to understand how we can make the process better, and I understand people are upset, so please continue.
And I have a little bit of a disagreement with about you not interfering with the assessor's job because at the end of the year, if I'm not mistaken, when I was on the city council, we had to sign a paper that said, "All of these assessments are correct." Because you have a duty, a fiduciary duty, to make sure everything in this city is proper. So therefore, you should have the proper reasons to ask him any question you want. You're not interfering with his job. You're looking out for the welfare and money of the city.
I understand that.
Thank you.
That's why we're trying to look at the process. Counselor O'Hern?
This is a question for the attorney. How did we jump from non-interference of the council when the council didn't answer the question? How did we jump from non-interference of the council when the council didn't ask the question? It was asked by a citizen.
Is that the question?
Well, I may say it again. You said about non-interference of the council asking the assessor question, but in fact we're not asking, we never even asked anything concerning that. That was from the public. So how is the public question now potentially interference with our council interference?
Well, because the council has called this meeting, it's requested the appearance of the assessor, it's created a venue in which these questions can be posed. So it's basically an indirect non-interference by allowing the public to ask the questions that the council may want to ask as to the performance of the assessor. So essentially the interference is created by the meeting itself and the allowance for the questions to be posed by the public.
Hello. Maybe just, I don't know if it's a comment or a question. So long story short, this question will probably never be answered because if the current person sitting in the assessor's office leaves, because he's apparently leaving, we'll never have the answer to this question.
I guess I don't know how to answer that question, other than the fact that, you know, in terms of the question, if there's a question as to why this happened, that's a question that people can pose to the assessor. He can choose to answer it or not answer it. With regard to 91A, 91A is the ability to get governmental records that are public. That's all you're entitled to in a 91A, the right to know law. That's all you're entitled to. If he chooses to answer the question, if someone comes up to him in the office and says, why in the world did you do this? He has the right to answer it, he has the right not to answer that. The public has the right to ask for public records in the assessor's office that may be subject to or pertinent to this tax abatement, but that's the only thing they're entitled to seeking in regards to this issue.
Okay, yes.
Greg Blyle, Ward 2. My question is for the manager. If you say that you manage from 50,000 feet that small menial office, it must be menial if there's only a few employees, isn't it correct? If you manage from 50,000 feet and $222,000 gets thrown away and you don't think it's worth diving into, we got a problem. And I challenge every one of you people that are on this council, if you don't think that that's a problem, there's a huge problem there. So that's my statement.
Okay. Yes.
Patrick Lozito, Ward 1. There's an allegation that there has been a violation of state law. Now, I think the council, if it's within their purview, I have no idea if it is, but that's something that I would think should be of concern. And if there is a mechanism in place, where do you go to investigate it? Okay? Because if there is such a violation, that's something that should be investigated and taken care of, okay? Because then you don't want the city council and all the rest of it like, you know, complicit due to ignorance in an event, you know? So I think it's for the, you know, in the best interests of Claremont and the city council and everyone involved, it should simply be something to be investigated. If there is no violation, then there isn't any. But to speculate and conjecture and whatever, it's a waste of time, okay? But that's, you know, that has to be done through proper procedures and proper so that it stands on a foundation that can't be refused. Okay? But that's really all I can say.
Thank you. Anybody else? How about over here?
I wrote mine down. I'm Cindy Haynes, Ward 2. I've been a Realtor for 35 years and have always tried to promote Claremont and to justify our property taxes being higher than any other municipalities by highlighting our services offered to the citizens of our community. Correct me if I am wrong. I believe property abatements are built into our annual budget. These are normally property assessment abatements, not property tax abatements. When the city exceeds an annual budget line from the council, then the council is notified and approves adjustments as needed. Was this done in the property tax abatement issue? Why were these abatements not processed in our current fiscal year? It appears that all the payments were backdated to the time they were due. Posting abatements for the previous five years on the due dates would make our annual audits incorrect. Now, was the 222,000 that was wiped away from 2012 to 2018, was that what was abated? Can anyone answer that?
Again, I would recommend that the council not request the assessor to answer that question because it speaks to the merits of a particular matter that's outside the purview of the council.
So what about the 2006 to 2012 taxes? Were they paid?
Again, my answer would be the same, is not to answer that question.
Ken?
Okay, okay. It's not- Correct me if I'm wrong, legal counsel. It's not, what legal counsel is saying, this is not the right venue for us. Okay, so if that's the question?
Nothing, because nobody has answers for anything.
Let's conduct ourselves similarly.
If I may interject, if someone has questions about the operation of the assessor's office, those questions should be directed to the city manager.
Exactly.
And the city manager can then address that with the concerns of the public as well as with the assessor. But this city council has no role in abatement cases, period. So I understand that the public wants the council to elicit these answers on behalf of the public, but that's not, that's not the purpose of this body. So if anyone has any issues with the performance of the assessor, that needs to be raised with the city manager.
So to clarify, Mr. Chingway, what you're trying to tell the public is if they have some questions and they would like answers, they can be posed to the city manager or Mr. Lassard, or both.
Yes.
What he's trying to tell you is because of, we don't have a role in these decisions. We have a different type of role, which is why we're going to look at the process. But if you want specific answers to your questions, please follow legal counsel's advice. Speak directly to Mr. Lassard or Mr. McNutt. We are not trying to stop you from getting the information. What the legal counsel is saying, it's not our role to do this. Our role is to create a process that works. We understand from this issue, this process could be much, much improved. And I will go into that once we are done gathering all the public comments. Your questions are being captured in the minutes and I am sure that the administration will be happy to answer them, okay? Counselor O'Hern?
So if I understand legal counsel, that these questions, that the last question that was asked has to be posed to the city manager directly or to, or basically the city manager?
Or Mr. Lassard, or both. However-
So let's just hypothetically say, so what possibly could happen is that all these people that have questions, that have the same question and want the same answer, will have to line up at the city manager's door and go in one by one to get the answer? And I have it here in the public forum? If it has to be directed to the city manager from the port, you know, because we're not going to interfere with Mr. Lassard, then I would pose the question that was just asked by that lady. Can he answer it? Can the city manager answer the question?
I think what you didn't hear legal counsel say is this is a council meeting. By having it in this venue, we're indirectly placed in the position of interference. Am I correct or incorrect?
That's correct, yeah.
We are all tied by statute and charter. I didn't write the charter. So is there somebody else who would like to speak?
Walter Stapleton, Ward 3. Also happened to be a candidate for the New Hampshire House, District 5. I'm not going to ask any questions because I do understand that this is not the proper venue for an audit that would really accomplish the details needed. So I have some comments and a suggestion. My comments derive out of a report that I became privy to known as the Sullivan Report. Now, some people think that this is a fine piece of work, others think that it's not so fine. But what he has in that report, which is available on your computer and website, are excerpts from city records and tax records, valuation cards, payment cards, some further detail. And I believe Representative Goetheer had done a lot of contribution to that report in investigating and reporting the detail. There is a lot of textual interpretation within that Sullivan Report recently published. Well, you can take that as you like it or don't like it, but some of the more salient points, this property was valued at $670,400. Topstone requested apparently a reduction to 125,000. The assessor apparently saw better to reduce it to 175,000. And my, looking at that, well, my house is a single-family residential and that's about what my place is assessed for. And here we're talking about a commercial property on a large piece of land, three or four-story building. And I can't see how that comes to $175,000, especially when I understand through some other sources that there was a million dollars or so input into this structure, this property over the course of time for elevators, windows, repairs of leakage, general improvements. Now with a million dollars' worth of input, how can we come down and boil this down to $175,000 of assessed value? And then the report shows various zero out of several years of tax payments ostensibly because of the abatement. And then shows some payment, but the payment dates don't seem to correspond to open office times. There's a lot of other detail. There's a lot of variant detail in that report. I would encourage everybody to read it. The upshot is, is that we collected as of August of 2018, $8,000. And that was for apparently the 2018 and for the building and the vacant lot adjacent to it. So as people have stated before, we're looking at $222,000 of gone money, however you want to define that. What I'm going to say is that we can't do much about that here and now. And as the attorney pointed out, this is not a proper venue for a proper or in-depth look into this. But I would suggest that the council and the city, by a professional tax auditor and maybe in coordination with the Board of Land and Tax Appeal and any other state agencies that have expertise and authority in this matter, and open it up and let the professionals discern how this all came about. And then it can be made proper public record upon which the council can act and the citizens could know what's happened here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Howard?
Same sound system, correct? Everybody can hear me? Cynthia Howard, Ward 2. A few things. A common sense question is, what are we trying to hide? The documents aren't here, obviously, because there's nothing down here. I don't see anything unless I'm blind. If you call a council meeting, wouldn't you have an informational packet with this information in it so people could look at it? They wouldn't even have to look at, get a right to know request. Can anyone answer that for me?
Again, the purpose of this meeting is regarding the process. We have been advised by legal counsel not to deal with any one particular decision. If you want those documents, they will be furnished through the right to know request process.
Doesn't make any sense to me, but I'm not a lawyer either, so to me, this is an economic, it's not economic development. I've heard that word, oh, we've got to build the city up, we've got to have economic development, economic growth so that we can expand our tax base. But what this is, is an economic giveaway to this, it's taking money away from the citizens and giving it to special interests. It's called corporate welfare. It's the worst thing, worst-case scenario. We've seen this before, but I'm afraid this will be, this will set a precedent so that we are going to be susceptible to lawsuits because another property owner will come in and say, well, you did it for this person, why not do it for me? Whether you knew about it or not, or who knows about it? They're going to request that or they're going to follow their legal counsel and take the city of Claremont to court. And there's been a lot of homeowners that have lost their property for a fraction of $222,000. This is a lot of money. And when people come up here and challenge the budget, oh, we can't cut the budget. Oh, we'll shut the services down, we'll shut the city down. But you can give money away, taxpayer money away, that's what it is, you know? And we all know it. It's not something, we believe that something's being hid here. Not sure exactly what, but who knows what or what is being hid? We will find out. We'll delve a little bit, delve a little bit deeper into this. And economic development only starts with lower taxes and less regulation. You can ask President Trump. And we are being watched around the country.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Klosky?
Nick Klosky, Ward 3. I want to start off by saying that I fully believe that this entire process is flawed. I'm hoping that lawmakers are paying attention to this and with their help, maybe some of this stuff could be changed and conquered because that seems to be where any authority granted comes from. I was hoping to actually hear some sort of substance here tonight at this meeting. I haven't really felt that we've received any of that. I had questions, I'm not going to bother to ask them because I can't get an answer. It's really upsetting, honestly, that we're not going to discuss the actual merits of the Topstone building. I kind of was under that impression originally. And I've been telling people that this is the meeting you could go to actually receive some answers. So for that, if anybody's tuning in and you're not getting answers, I apologize. Sometimes I think we're our own worst enemy in the fact that we can make everything look like a conspiracy. I want to point out that when city solicitor Jane Taylor was here, it was a matter of public record stating that the building that- public record stating that the building that we're located in, me, a tenant in Topstone, has multiple code violations. That is false and has bothered me to this day. No one bothered to correct it. I would caution the city and council that when you reference private property, you'd be cautious to only present fact. The property is commonly referenced as being contaminated with no real explanation once anyone here mentions it. That's doing a great job at providing a disservice to the taxpayers and lack of clear communication. Imagine being a tenant, having to routinely explain to people that it's water plumes in a sandlot that comes and goes. This triggers social media sites to have to list that my groundwater or my water supply is contaminated. All false. The building is on city water and sewer, which is all safe. I commonly read speculation and questions online as to how tenants are allowed to remain. I can answer that. We don't conduct business hundreds of feet below the ground on the rear fence line. All occupied spaces are up to code, and annual inspections for life safety to include fire alarm and sprinkler controls costing thousands of dollars a year are done. Our restaurant is inspected every six months by state law. It's ironic that the things being discussed today appear to have gone along with New Hampshire state law, which I don't agree with, and the folks behind the commentary and rumor mill, the same folks that could actually enact legislation to change the way abatements are granted. I guess we all choose to channel our energy different. I would recommend to those lawmakers that they look at the 18 percent interest required by law. This isn't about one mill to me. The abatement that triggered tonight's discussion, I do not agree with as forgiving anything. Something per year for the past years should have carried over. I will always think to myself that there would have been a better way. It's hurtful to read comments directed at my family pretending I have control over any of this. I recuse myself from any discussion as it's a legal and ethical thing to do, and I'm a renter in the property. The owners of the building have been respectful not to discuss any of this with me outside of their lack of funding sources, the managing partner of the building suffering a massive stroke, and having frustration that their only two options to be heard in the state of New Hampshire were Superior Court or the Land, Board, and Tax Appeals. By public documents, I learned they chose the second option. I am puzzled as to why the city didn't let that be heard and chose this option instead. I would request the council revisits its conflict of interest policy and get a refresher on disclosure and public right-to-know. I call into question why a letter from the property owner that was received on July 3 by the city was not read into public record as requested. The same letter was sent to the mayor on July 12 with a follow-up phone call requesting the same last Wednesday around 5:30 by the letter's author. Collectively, we try to be transparent, so this lack of disclosure as it clearly asked is to be a matter of public record troubles me. This was addressed to Mr. McNutt from one of the owners of the building. "Mr. McNutt, it's come to my attention that there had been discussions regarding our Claremont property located at 101 Mulberry Street, known as the Topstone Building, at recent council meetings. It's also my understanding that these discussions have included City Councilor Jonathan Stone. I perceive this to be a conflict of interest, as it's my understanding that Councilor Stone is a business partner of Mark LaMose. Mr. LaMose made contact with me in an effort to have a discussion about he and his partners acquiring our property. He received my contact information from the planning office prior to contacting me. I'm sure this can be confirmed with the planning office. I would kindly request that this perceived conflict of interest be entered into record." And he has his contact info. The gentleman named in this letter was just put on a city board without hesitation last Wednesday, even though he indicated most likely in a humongous error, no to having done business with the city or any board or having any relation to any city employee. He and another seated councillor, he was another seated councillor's mortgage holder, and they have conducted real estate transactions. I would suggest public disclosure from now on, and I shouldn't be the only one recusing myself for making this known. I have any of these documents if anybody wants them. Thank you.
Actually, I have a question.
Yes, Counselor.
From Mr. Koloski. Who is the author of that letter?
The author of the letter is John Cawkins.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Mr. Osken? What?
I mean...
Mr. Osken, Ward 2. I think I cooled down a little bit.
Counselor here.
Sorry. Can we verify if just if these letters were received and why there was a decision that it wasn't entered into record? It was a perceived non... Just wondering. I'm not saying there is a conflict of interest. I'm just wondering why, if someone brought it up as possible, why it wasn't read into record as requested, if it was received?
Well, I am a little taken by surprise.
Understandable. I think we are.
So, I will get you an answer. Mr. Osken?
All set. Okay. Up and... Oh, go ahead.
Should we ask anybody else that hasn't spoken?
I didn't see any other hands.
For the first time?
I didn't see any other hands when I asked. Is there anybody else who hasn't spoken who would like to speak? Mr. Osken?
Thank you. Up until Mr. Koloski got up here, to my satisfaction, his business wasn't mentioned, and I don't think it should be mentioned while we're talking about Topstone Holdings LLC. Mr. Koloski runs a business in that building, yes. I spent numerous hours on the state's website for soil contamination about that piece of property. Mr. Koloski is absolutely correct. Nobody should avoid his business because of, you know, because of the property. No reason whatsoever to avoid that property as a citizen. As a matter of fact, after spending... This was last night, too. I've been involved in a brown field. It's cleaned up. The state signed it off, and everybody's happy. And it didn't cost a whole lot of money. The problem I have with that property is they don't even know where the contamination is coming from. I've made a few of my own assumptions, and it's not on that property. At that point, I would be down to the state if I owned that building, and I would say, "Tell me how this property did it, or I'm not paying any more bills." They're not responsible for it. It's on two other pieces of property that they don't even own. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else from the public? All right. As I stated earlier, we're going to bring it back to the council for discussion about and direction about the process and how it should be modified or changed before I...
Take a break.
Yes. Okay. I'm sorry. We'll take a 10-minute break. We're going to reconvene, come back from break. At the time of the break, we were just beginning the discussion of what direction we want to give the city manager with regard to modification of the process and a discussion from the council and what that might look like. I have a couple of suggestions, but then I'll hear from the council. During break time, we... It's my understanding that after speaking with legal counsel, the city manager and Mr. Lassard offered the possibility, since everybody is here and we want to be respectful of everybody's time, that we will shortly convene the council meeting, and the city manager and Mr. Lassard will stay to answer your questions with regard to the Topstone. I know this seems a little bit odd, because this is what you've wanted from the beginning, many of you have stated. I just want to remind everybody, one, this meeting was called, as I had stated, last Wednesday, and I reiterated tonight, to discuss the process. We've gone through the process. We're going to make some changes. I understand you want some answers to questions with regard to this particular decision. It is not the role nor the responsibility of the city council. Therefore, that is why we will end the council meeting and give people in the audience, the people from the public, the opportunity to ask your questions directly. Have I said everything?
Just a minute.
Okay. So...
I want to bring up the board of assessors. I want to bring up the board of assessors.
Yes. So, before we convene the council meeting so that you can ask your questions of the city manager and Mr. Lassard, legal counsel did state that it's very important that statements with regard to the property are true, and that is out of consideration of the property owner. So, before we adjourn, a couple of comments were made during the public testimony and that with regard to some changes we can make to the process. Before we had the council meeting tonight, I had already started looking at that. One of them, as Mr. LaCasse had brought up, was the abort of assessors. I have with me tonight, and you can find it on the web, what King does. So, I looked at what other cities that have a city council, city manager form of government have a board of assessors, and they include, in addition to King, Concord, Lebanon, Nashua... Well, Nashua has a strong mayor form of government, but Concord, Lebanon, and Berlin. If you go to King's ordinance with regard to a board of assessors, you will find, when they outline the powers, duties, and guidelines, those really respond to a lot of the concerns that members of the public had to improve the process. So, keeping in mind everybody's time, and I know they want to answer Mr. Lassard, ask Mr. Lassard and Mr. McNutt questions, my suggestion to the council before we convene is that if that's the direction that the council would at least like the policy committee to investigate, it would be my suggestion that the policy committee immediately look at board of assessors and how it's constituted and what their powers, duties, and responsibilities are, and have the city manager there, Mr. Lassard, to ask questions of, and then have the policy committee bring to the council for approval the establishment of a board of assessors. That is my best recommendation at that time, at this time. Any comments? Counselor Pope?
As the policy committee is looking at this, could we get continual updates?
Yes.
And also, what are other options on the menu of potential changes? Maybe they could look at those as well. And the other comment I have is, there's a lot of information provided to the council for this meeting tonight, and I think it's in the past been appropriate that when the information is provided, we have a bunch of handouts, that that is put on the website as a council packet. And so, rather than some of the right-to-know requests, some of the information we got as background and such should be put on the website.
Sure. We can do that. Counselor O'Hern? Excellent suggestion.
I have a problem with us adjourning and going to this forum. The reason being is that half of the audience and the people that had questions have left not knowing this was going to happen, and I think they would have been here to ask questions. I think we should... If it's going to be a public forum and not a council meeting, it should be held here at a certain time, videotaped, publicized, so that people can see it that are out there, the ones that can't make it. But, you know, I have a problem with people that just left, did not know this was going to happen, and now we're going to do it.
I didn't know this was going to happen until the break. It was offered as a possible solution to some of the people's concerns.
I would not be in favor of that.
Thoughts from the council?
Good idea, but I think, yeah, go in a broader forum.
Okay. Anybody else?
I would agree with the concept, but I do also recognize that there are still a lot of people... More people than come to any of our meetings are here still, even though I do completely agree that, without knowing, this lot of people did leave, and that is not great for them. But I feel bad that people are still here, committed to this, and we could offer this in addition to also offering another forum, maybe that other people can come to. I think maybe that would be a better compromise. I don't know. Just my thoughts.
I would concur with that option as well, as would I.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. So, before we convene, I just want to ensure that this is going to be a top priority for the policy committee. Normally, the policy committee would meet tomorrow, but there's not enough time to put out the notice for that, unless it's already on the website that we're convening.
I can check. I'm not sure what's up here.
If it's not already listed on the website that we're convening on the 20th...
I got the stat today.
And somebody's checking that right now. We will meet on December...
December.
September 27 at 6:30 p.m.
It is listed on the website.
It is listed on that we're meeting tomorrow. Okay, good. So, the policy committee will be here tomorrow at 6:30.
To discuss... It says 6 o'clock.
At 6:00 o'clock. Am I meeting here?
It says Visitor Center.
At the Visitor, okay. So, to be clear, the city... The policy committee will be meeting at 6:00 tomorrow at the Visitor Center. And the item on the agenda will be investigating the structure and instituting a board of assessors for the city of Claremont. Is that good? Everybody clear? Mr. McNutt, can you be there?
I will have to check. I'm not sure.
All right. We'll start the process. I can gather all of the ordinances that pertain to a board of assessors through the website at these other cities, and we can at least start the contrast and comparison. I think that's it. So, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So, the motion was made by Assistant Mayor Dameron, seconded by Counselor Pope. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.